Good evening, everyone. I'm reconvening the supervisor meeting for Monday, December 6th. And we go, the closed meeting did not occur, so we'll go straight into the public hearing. The ad for Holly Springs Road turn lane from Route 211.
Yes, I'll just give a quick introduction and allow VDOT representative to add additional if they feel it's necessary. As board is aware, back in May, you held a public hearing for your six-year secondary road plan. And following that public hearing, you adopted your SSYP, as it's called. That process usually happens annually, and you usually hold your public hearing in May. At a recent board meeting, the board voted to allocate additional funding from your VDOT accounts, the telefee dollars, to install a turn lane at Route 239 off of 211 at Holly Springs Road. And after a further review, VDOT determined that in order to do that, you must amend your SSYP. And amending your SSYP requires you to hold a public hearing. That public hearing was advertised in the newspaper as required, and materials have been available for inspection, both at the VDOT office and at my office, since that has been advertised. Just for the benefit of people here, I will go ahead and show this intersection. Most people recognize the intersection as being directly across from Weaver Lane, which goes to the Amesville refuse site. So if you know where that is, this is the other side. You can see, coming from the Warranton area, there is already a turn lane to turn onto Weaver. But coming from the Amesville area, heading towards Warranton, there is now just a very small taper, and providing a full decel turn lane there would be a safety measure. So to do that, you have the funds. This project would not change the schedule for any of your unpaved roads in the SSYP, because those funds come from a slightly different bucket. And this will use those telefee dollars that are past-year dollars, and make that funding immediately available, so the project could get going. Soon as you get through the particulars, and VDOT can get the project pulled together and designed finished. With that, I'll allow VDOT to add anything additional, if there is anything additional. And if you're speaking to the mic, so people at home can hear you.
No, I think you covered it pretty well. Martin Esbit was the VDOT resident engineer. We did get, we received a request earlier this year about the need for, possible need for a turn lane there, and we reviewed the situation and determined that, yeah, a turn lane would be helpful there. So we had some funds available to allocate, and the board supervisors was kind enough to do that. So we're going to proceed with the project, seeing if we can get it officially on the plan. If there's any questions from anyone, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
How much is a turn lane of that length?
We've estimated it to be about $120,000.
Wow. And what's the primary cost driver there? Is it materials, labor?
Yeah, materials and, yeah. Asphalt, it's continually to increase.
Have you found asphalt costs have gone up a lot in the last?
Yeah, they've gone up some. I don't have the exact percentages, but they have been rising.
Okay.
If we vote to do this in the public hearing, when, do you have an estimated time that it would be completed?
We feel like we can complete it later this, later in 2022, latter half of 2022.
And how long would it take from beginning to end of the project?
No more than two weeks.
Okay.
You got to build up, basically, the depth of the four lane.
Correct. We'll cut out the shoulder, and we'd have to do some grading on the, on the side to try to, you know, have a ditch there. But there's some, there's some grading and putting a stone base in there, and then, you know, putting several inches of asphalt back.
When you, when you do projects like this, and you estimate a cost of $120,000, rough numbers on the front end, on the, upon completion of the project, do you have a tool within VDOT that you can revisit and actually look at your actual expenditures for the project compared to your estimate? And if so, would we, just for our own edification, be able to find out at some later date, once it's completed, what it actually cost?
Sure. Yeah, we'll definitely track costs, and we'll, you know, report back to the, to the board, the actual cost. Whatever we don't spend goes back into the, remains with the county.
For the benefit of the, the plan, the amount allocated in the plan is $150,000. We don't want to do this twice. And so hopefully their estimate will bear fruit. But for the actual SSYP, the number that is shown is $150,000.
Okay.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Nope. All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing with regards to the Holly Springs Road turn lane. Anyone wishing to comment, please come up to the mic and let us know what district you're in and your name.
Good evening, board members. My name is Tommy Atkins. I'm from the Amesville, well, Jackson District, the Amesville resident. I've been a resident of Amesville since 1993, I believe. And I live within probably 1,000 feet of this intersection. We're talking about doing this turning lane. And I would highly recommend and support that this board vote to move forward with that as soon as possible, because it is a very dangerous intersection. I haven't actually witnessed, but I've seen the results of several accidents. I've actually been out in my yard, heard the noise, heard the crash, looked up the road. With no question, it was at the intersection of Holly Springs Road. And it was, we, I've, I've heard that and seen that several different times. So I highly recommend that we move forward and get this done as soon as possible. And I thank VDOT for their, the work that they do and the expertise that they worked on, on what I consider to be safety issues. And VDOT has, for as I'm concerned, has a good record in addressing safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the courtroom? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during this public comment period or public hearing period? Not seeing any Zoom hands raised. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for comment. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how that thing got up there. But anyway, I'll probably sound about as loud as with it up there or down here. This is in Jackson District, but it affects everybody that travels that road, whether they're a Rappahannock resident or not. And it, it really is, I think, a dangerous intersection. And any, anything that we can do to repair that, that problem and, you know, correct it, I'm totally behind. And I hope the board finds that they can support it, too.
Is that a motion?
It is.
There's a resolution in the packet.
I'll put forth this resolution as written in the form of a motion.
I'll second Mr. Frazier's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, hold on. I never fixed the audio from this time.
Please hold.
Hope she wasn't trying to talk before.
Me, too.
All right, Ms. Smith, you should be good to go.
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Yep.
That would be quick.
Lot of driving, lot of driving.
Y'all have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thanks a lot. Yep, thanks.
All right. Moving into the public hearing number two, which is RCC Chapter 43 Purchasing Amendment.
Yes, this, I brought this matter to the board a couple of months ago. Board referred it to the Rules Committee to review, who passed it back to the board. The board authorized me to advertise this public hearing pursuant to Code of Virginia 1521427, which requires you to hold a public hearing before you amend in, amend your ordinances. This was, in fact, advertised in the local newspaper two weeks, as necessary, and was available for inspection in my office, as well as being on board docs. The actual ordinance, ordinance amendment is included on board docs, as was provided in my office. And you can see the changes. We talked through those changes before, but largely they're made to better track the Code of Virginia, which is Chapter 43, that has all the Virginia Public Procurement Act requirements. And this a lot, better aligns our local ordinance with that, increases your small purchasing procedures, a maximum amount to align with that, which is allowed by the Code of Virginia, and then mimics the Code of Virginia in several areas regarding the different types of purchasing, whether it be professional services, non-professional servicing goods, and then your joint and cooperative procurement, sole source, emergency procurement, to allow you to do things in your small purchasing policy, the same way they are for larger items that are driven by the Public Procurement Act. Finally, it does change the thresholds for which the board must be involved for awards. Was 10,000, is proposing 25,000, is that dividing line threshold between what projects and contracts I can award versus the board. But those awards can only be made if there has been an appropriation, an appropriate budget for that project. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions before or after you open the floor to the public.
Hearing, no questions from the board. I will open the public hearing for RCC Chapter 43 Purchasing Amendment. If anyone wishes to comment, please come up and let us know which district you're in. And I'll open it to the floor. Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Is there anyone on the Zoom world that would like to speak? Not seeing any hands there either. I will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, should we defer to one of the members of the Rules Committee to lead the charge here?
Probably a great idea.
Lead the charge. So there is the, if there aren't further questions, the amendment in the form of an ordinance is provided and attached, and you basically vote on that, similar to this you would for a resolution. And the motion would be to adopt the ordinance amendment as presented.
Well, a little historical background here. I have some hesitation, but the fact that the, the spending can't happen without a prior appropriation, I think we may be safe. I, I missed a meeting in 2016, and at that meeting, the board purchased an army truck and another vehicle that hadn't been appropriated previously. But I think that even raising these limits, the money still has to be appropriated. So I think the county can, can be reasonably assured, the taxpayers reasonably assured that things like that may not happen again.
And we still do, of course, there is full transparency on what is purchased, and every board meeting, the full listing of checks cut are in the board packet, so.
Well, we thought we had it then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I don't want to upstage, Ms. Smith is also on the Rules Committee, but we did, we did discuss it at length, and we, we think it'd be appropriate, there's enough safeguards.
Okay.
Ms. Smith? Anything?
I would just say that, it's my understanding that, you know, adopting this just puts, aligns the code of Virginia better, and it also allows more flexibility, but still demands the same amount of oversight. So I think it's a good compromise, and will allow, I think, input to administration to have a little more confidence in the things that they need to do, to do their job effectively.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Like to make a motion?
If no motion, I mean, no more discussion, then I'll go ahead and place a, in form of a motion that we adopt, is this a resolution as well?
It's an ordinance.
Just a change in the ordinance of Chapter 43 of the Rappahannock County Code.
I'll go ahead and second it. I know Ms. Smith, how awkward it is being at home, so if she wants to second, I'll leave that to her.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. And the third public hearing for the evening.
Actually, we're on a public comment, I think.
Oh, no.
No. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was way out.
The amendment, amended budget, FY 2022.
Yes, each meeting, not each meeting, many meetings, the board adopts supplemental appropriations to your budget, things that come up after you adopted your budget last April. And typically, November, December, there's a truing up process where the schools in the county reviews the revenues that we receive from outside sources, such as federal government, state government grants, and corrects what the estimates were, forecasts were in April, several months before the fiscal year actually started. And that's happening tonight. In addition, there are other appropriations that have to be added to the budget. One of those, some of those appropriations exceed 1% of your budget. Code of Virginia requires you to have a public hearing to make sure the public's engaged and understands what you're doing. This public hearing has been advertised as required pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section And as you can see in the bolted list, there's a summary of those items that have been added. Those are $377,000 of previous supplemental appropriations that were below that 1% threshold, $499,000 of true-up for the schools, which is, there's a letter attached to guide those changes, $715,000, $768,000, which is the first tranche of the ARPA funds that you received last May, but were never actually added to the budget. While you have allocated $65,000 of that for use, you couldn't have spent it, because it wasn't in the budget yet. This adds it to the budget, and if you've reviewed the details, it adds it to a new fund, 101, the general fund being Fund 100. As opposed to the CARES Act, we tracked a little bit differently. With this ARPA funding, we're putting in a totally separate fund. We think it'll be easier to track and audit. At your recent meeting, the board voted to provide additional revenue to fire stations for depressed fundraising revenue. Company one and two is to be allocated from the Fire Service Fund. That's included. Another $76,000 was for the remaining payment on the L3 HARA system that's been carried over multiple years. That's what's left to pay. I did miss, Company three, just after that, is funded from the general fund for their reduced fundraising revenue, $46,000. And then I had, at that time, a placeholder for Company four and five of $5,000. It's actually a little bit more than that. There's a supplemental appropriation after this to true that up. Those items are all incorporated into the revised budget that is attached, and it's in a similar form to your other budgets. It just shows in these columns where you had your original adopted budget, and then a supplemental appropriation in the date over time when they happened, to include today's date.
Okay.
In order to take this action, after you hear from the public, just like when you adopted your budget in April, you'll have to adopt amended budget resolution. You will adopt an amended appropriation resolution. And then I'm requesting that you authorize us to include the fire department checks in the next mid-month, so they don't have to wait till January.
Government is really awesome.
And happy to take questions before or after you hear from the public.
Could you repeat all that?
I could, but I'm sure the audience doesn't want me to.
That's the one wire I knew was coming, so.
Any discussion before I open? All right, hearing none. I will open the public hearing for FY 2022 amended budget. Anyone wishing to speak, please step up to the mic and let us know which district you're in. Seeing no one in the courtroom, if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to this, please raise your Zoom hand.
Somebody makes me think I should have said less.
No, but by saying a little more, you clear the way.
Not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion at the board.
Madam Chair, with gratitude to our county administrator for keeping us on the straight and narrow, and the train's running on time, I will begin the proceedings by putting forward a motion to adopt the amended budget resolution. Mr. Curry, I assume you want to do each of these separately?
Yes, in that order, in the order listed in the recommended actions. So budget, then appropriation.
Yep.
Okay. You have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Parrish? You okay, Mr. Frazier, if we give Mr. Parrish a little last?
A last second?
Sure. We can make it by acclamation. But we'll, we'll let him make the last one.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the budget adoption resolution motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Catch you every time.
It does. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I also.
Madam Chair, I will put forward a motion to adopt the amended appropriation resolution as presented, which tracks with the already adopted budget resolution.
That's your cue.
That's your cue.
Second.
Man, you're, you're worn out.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And I also.
Madam Chair, I, I will put forward a motion to authorize volunteer fire and rescue depressed revenue payment, which should go out in our mid-December check run, thank goodness, because I already promised Company one that they would get their money this month, so.
Great. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is that roll call?
I would just want to confirm that the supplemental appropriations that are coming up next include a recommendation for four, Company four and five, seven and nine declined. Any additional funding? I just wanted to clarify that, should you approve the supplemental appropriation, that they are also to be included in the mid-month.
I confirm that, and please incorporate that into my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parrish sticks with his second.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do you need a roll call or do you want?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all those in favor say?
Roll call.
No.
It's not a resolution.
Not a resolution.
See, now I'm on your.
Thank you for trying to help.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, very efficient.
Now, we're moving into the public comment period for the evening. Anyone wishing to speak, please step up to the mic and let us know your district and your name. Yes, ma'am.
I am Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District. And I mostly want to thank those board members who have persisted in pursuing adequate and affordable internet for the county. I also want to thank Chris Parrish for an amazing job for years on this board. He's done it with integrity and with the best interests of the county always in the forefront of his mind. And, and I know that, even though I have often disagreed with him on, on things, but I know that his heart is always in the best place, and he's made a lot of wise decisions, and I'm really grateful for your service. But on the issue of the internet, I really do think you should pursue the all-points broadband, its proposed sufficient fiber optic for, as you know, 24,000 people and businesses in Rappahannock. And if you, you think about what, for instance, Geneva Welch shared this afternoon about our telephone services, our landline services are becoming increasingly inadequate. And we have Verizon, but it takes weeks for, for them to come and fix the line so that you can actually hear people on the other line. And as Geneva was saying, I mean, the Centia link is just ridiculous. And the fiber optic will really solve that problem. So you're going to provide for the safety, as well as the, you know, the safety of the older people and the education of the younger people. It's just win-win, and you have the money, you know? So I'm encouraging you to allocate the million dollars from the ARPA. And, and thank you. Thank you mostly for persisting in, in getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions in my mind, ask you a question or two.
Not typically during the public comment.
Please go to the mic, so people at home can hear.
Put them in your comments. Okay.
Give us your name and district.
Alan Zuschlag, Jackson District. I'd just like to second Ms. Ritter's comments about Chris Parrish, who I've known for decades. He's a good guy. He bush-hogged my first fields for me way back when, and I've admired him ever since. So thank you for your service on the board. I understand that there is some, this is my question, but I'm going to put it in the form of a statement, then, and you can nod your heads, I guess, if I've got it right. That there's some funding for the internet that, to the tune of a million dollars, of which most of it is covered by other sources, but maybe a quarter million or so, still has to be approved or found somehow, if I'm, if I'm getting that right. I hope I am, more or less, at any rate. But spend the money, just go ahead and do it. I've been on the broadband committee for, in both of its iterations, forever, and the idea that we want to beggar our citizens to save a few dollars or to, I don't know, stop development is, is the dumbest idea I've ever heard in my life. It's just not going to happen. You, you, you delay broadband internet, the only people you're hurting are our own citizens, you're hurting the children, and you're hurting the elderly in this community, who need those services more than anybody else. If you think that keeping internet or keeping broadband at bay is somehow going to stop the invasion of wealthy people gentrifying this country, county, you're mistaken completely. That's not going to happen. Those people can afford internet services on their own, basically, and get broadband from other places and whatever like that. What you're hurting is the schoolchildren who have to do their homework and not compete with other people. What you're hurting is elderly people that can't stay in their homes and have the benefits of the internet, have the benefits of telemedicine and other things like that. All you're doing is, is delaying that for them. It's going to happen eventually, and we all know that, okay? But why not go ahead and fund the thing fully and get it done, so we can start enjoying that today? And start saving lives, and start letting our children get the education they deserve to be competitive, and start letting our local citizens stay in place and not have to move, because we have inadequate services here that should be, I think, you know, just a no-brainer. So I would say, if you don't fund this fully, I'm very disappointed, but I think everybody else in this county would as well. It is just, I cannot understand any opposition to this at all. It's just beyond my ken. So anyway, that's my piece. Fund the stuff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Yes, sir.
Here to the breach again. Gary Achill, still from Hampton. It's good to see you guys tonight, ladies, and Zoom lady, and Ms. Smith. It's interesting what Alan just said. About 10 years ago, not quite, when we located to Rappahannock, my first public meeting was on broadband. And they had a number of experts who came and reviewed what the options were and told us why it's so difficult. The terrain is bad, the sightlines are terrible, this is the technology that exists, probably that's two or three iterations ago now, a decade. But the bottom line, after an hour or two of discussion and debate, was, you know what? Rappahannock is never going to get what is considered by most in the country a public utility, like electricity, because it has to be supplemented, it has to be underwritten by a public authority like the county. And because the county is adverse to this, y'all can just go home and not waste any more of your time. It's never going to happen in Rappahannock, because your county board of your time. It's never going to happen in Rappahannock, because your county Board of Supervisors is never going to allocate the kind of dollars it's going to take to put together a package to get this done. That was a decade ago. Prophetic. Over and over, and how many meetings have there been? I stopped coming to them. I'm here tonight because there's a chance that after a decade, maybe, maybe. Now, I'm here primarily because I'm the current chair of the Headwaters Foundation. We dump over a quarter million dollars a year into this county, private charitable dollars, to try and support public education. And y'all know that the last two years have been a heavy lift. We have one of the best-administered public school districts, certainly in the state, maybe in the country, and despite their best efforts, we have been completely hamstrung by, not an antiquated, but a primarily non-existent public utility called internet. Now, we had, how many, 30 hotspots? The community rallied, the school worked hard. We did everything we could. They downloaded programs so the kids wouldn't need internet to get their homework done. They were all workarounds, because we don't have dependable, reliable internet service to a large population, and many of them, as you know, are families with kids. You heard from Geneva Welch. I'm not going to repeat that. I couldn't do it as eloquently. It's not my story. But it breaks my heart that we have seniors who are so anxious and so insecure about their daily lives, that not a day passes that they just pray to God they don't fall or need help, because there's no way to contact anybody. So you heard that. I'm here to tell you that every day we go without 21st-century communication in this county, you are retarding the educational advancement of a generation of schoolkids. Now, Headwaters can do everything we want. Private philanthropy will only get us so far. We can stand on our heads and beg dollars to enrich and promote excellence in our public schools, but it's like doing it with a chain and a ball on your leg, when our kids can't apply for aid, they can't apply to college, they can't get a driver's license, they can't do any of the things from home that you need internet access to do today. Plus, they're not learning how to enter a 21st-century economy or workplace. And here I stand telling you, I do everything I can to promote the county and public education and try and attract families that want to come here and enjoy the beauty and all the good things we have, and I want to keep families here, so they don't decide to move somewhere else. This is a game changer. Tonight, you have a chance to say, yes, we're going to make it happen. I don't know all the details. I trust you guys. I really do, to watch the public person. But I think this is a one and only chance. Our money doesn't come down the pike every day. If we can't make it happen this time, I really am going to lose faith that Rappahannock will join the 21st century and that our kids will have a shot at competing fairly with other people's children. I don't know what else to say about that. You all know the story, but I'm just saying, tonight could be the night. Make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Tommy Atkins from Jackson District. I have a couple items that are close, near and dear to me. And we're starting to go into a new calendar year, not a fiscal year, but of course, a new calendar year. And I would like to see us really get serious, everybody in this county, working together to provide affordable housing. There are a lot of people in this county that needs affordable housing. We have a lot of, we have a lot of good workers in this county with the law enforcement, the school system, and so on, and so on, that, right now, they can't afford to own a home in this county. They're living outside the county, traveling into the county to work. So I really think we really need to get serious and see, and I do believe there are some things that we can do that can bring about that, but we've got to work together to get it done. It's not just a, it's not a cookie-cutter approach to this thing. There are some, everybody's going to have to give and take a little bit. There's going to have to be some bending and working things together to make this happen, but I do believe strongly it can happen. Another one item that I have, we need to also provide tax relief for our seniors 65 and older. We've got a generation, we've got a lot of people in this county that are now 65 years older, and a lot of us are on fixed incomes, and each and every one of you know, the tax rate may not be going up, but the total amount of taxes we have to pay is constantly going up. And we know that beginning in January, the 1st of 1922, it's going to go, because we've all gotten our reassessment, and everybody's land value and property is up. And we can sit and argue about, well, why is that? That doesn't get it. We need to get down, pull up our bootstraps, and just do something for the elderly. Just give them, just work together and give them, you know, some of the, I don't know about some of these elderly people that has lost their land, maybe their property's been sold at the courthouse. I don't know the real reason behind that, but I believe that probably some, somewhere in that, in that situation, some of those people lost it because they couldn't afford to pay those taxes and bring them up. Now, you know, that's, that's really a hard pill to swallow. You've worked in this county, you've labored, and you've tried to make ends meet. You know, some people are more fortunate than others, but just, just work together. And just do something about giving these elderly a tax relief.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Atkins.
Hi, I'm Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont District, and first of all, I would also like to add my voice to thanking Chris Parrish for his many long years of service to this county, and I think those who are not on the board or don't see their daily actions can have no possible appreciation for the hours it takes and the long meetings, and not just at the board that we see, but meetings on all the committees and long phone calls and lots of emails and talking to people at the Quickie Mart, and it's just a lot.
It's a big one.
Yeah, yeah, Quickie Mart's a big one, so, yeah.
Four hours at least.
A week, or maybe a day. But anyway, I know I speak for so many Chris when we say thank you so much, and we wish you all the very best, and welcome to Mr. Carney. Look forward to that as well. Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, AKA the Broadband Authority, for all the incredibly hard work they've put into this broadband issue. It's also taken huge amounts of hours and an amazing amount of technical work and research that I can't myself begin to understand, and Mr. Curry as well has put in long hours on this. And I think that technical work has been very demanding and very important, but I also hope that in addition to the technical considerations, that we keep our eye on the other elephant in the room, as it were, which is the potential impact of these funds, that the potential that may or may not have on increasing growth pressure. We're already, of course, feeling this development with pressure with Clevenger's Corner and other similar things right on our borders, and the fact that we've been discovered as a rural oasis during COVID. I know that most, if not all of us, agree that we need broadband services for our schoolchildren, for our emergency services, and for our basic communications. I don't think there's any real doubt about that, but the question is, how do we use funds like ARPA and the VADI funds, which we're seeking for broadband services, but in keeping with the goals of our comprehensive plan and consistent with our current protective zoning scheme? Especially when we're, excuse me, entering into regional agreements with counties with very different growth strategies than ours, which is, I think, what we're looking at. We should seek to ensure that we're not also inadvertently purchasing higher-density pressures when we commit ourselves to these funding arrangements. I wonder, you know, what are some creative ways to maybe have a win-win out of this? So I would suggest that we consider adding, if possible, protective language into relevant final agreements or into any, some sort of legally binding resolutions, such as perhaps the following, quote, "Any use of funds allocated or appropriated for expenditure pursuant to ARPA or VADI grants for broadband shall be consistent with the declaration in the comprehensive plan that Rappahannock County is a scenic county in which preservation and enhancement of the natural and historic beauty and cultural values of the countryside shall be respected as being of foremost importance," and that comes directly out of our comprehensive plan, of course. "But specifically, any improvements purchased with these funds shall be limited to uses allowed by current zoning density as of the date of the grants." I think that's something we haven't really considered or thought about, but I think maybe it's worth thinking about. I recognize that legal counsel would have to advise on the feasibility of any such language, but we should be squarely addressing the question of how to protect our current zoning and rural character, even as we try to meet these other needs. We're having to push pretty quickly to obtain these large federal and state grants, as well as entering potentially regional MOUs that many of us don't fully understand. Excuse me, I haven't memorized these things. It's not 100% clear to me that our true best option is this regional agreement, but if it is, at least let's do whatever we can to keep it from harming our core values of protecting our view sets, our natural landscapes, and our rural character. I do have language that you can look at if you.
Thank you.
And again, I thank you so much for all the time and effort you put into this and your willingness to listen to residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the courtroom? Want to go again?
I do want to address these issues, points, and I think it is an elephant in the room, but I think it has been addressed, but I'm here to say, it's a complete canard. Getting broadband is not going to open floodgates. It just isn't. The floodgates are already open, people. I've been dealing with it for the past two years. I mean, everybody wants to live here, okay? But we've got zoning in place, we've got our comprehensive plan in place, we've got a strong board. Adding language like that is a really good idea, I think, but it should not be used as a weapon or to weaponize opposition to broadband. It's just, it's just a non-starter. So I think when you decide on your funding, a regional plan makes a lot of sense to me. The all-points plan makes a lot of sense to me. All the work we've gone and done so far makes a lot of sense to me, and I can't see holding that up on a, on a fear that isn't going to materialize, right? We've already got our zoning in place. If anything, you want to strengthen zoning, I'm all for it. I would just as soon not have another single resident in the county, but I can't do that, right? But at the same time, you know, broadband is, how shall I put this? It's something that everybody needs in this country to get ahead. I think Gary was very eloquent in that, and I would hate to see us beggar our own citizens for this amorphous fear that development's going to come down the pike and, you know, ruin paradise. It's not going to happen. So please fund it fully. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would wish to speak? Not seen.
I believe Ms. Childress. She contacted me to see if there was a way to, I don't know if she wants to comment, but she asked if there was a Zoom option. I let her know, so just.
If you do want to comment and you're on Zoom, you should raise your Zoom hand, and you do that through.
Your internet connection is unstable, Gary.
How do I speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead and ask Ms. Childress to unmute.
This is a fiber connection.
You should be unmuted, Ms. Childress.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi there. Yes, speaking of internet connection, I was just sitting here like, gosh, my service is like, my connection is big on this moment, and I think I missed a few comments, so I'm sorry if I repeat something that I've already said, but, so, thank you for flagging me since I was trying to figure out how to get in to speak, so thank you. So this is we at Childress. I live in Hampton District, and just speaking in support of, you know, the whole broadband initiative, and I guess there's one thing that, you know, my husband and I jointly crafted this message, so we just feel that using broadband in Rappahannock County, you know, is an example of a pretty major infrastructure undertaking that we just can't accomplish individually. So whether we like it or not, we really do all depend on each other, you know, to be good neighbors and caring citizens and working across the lines to pursue access to broadband here is a benefit to us all, so I just want to echo the support and gratitude that others have expressed to all those who mean it possible, and to those who support the program, and to the generosity of the operates for making this feel like, you know, a more attainable outcome and goal. So, you know, we just feel that using ARPA funds to bring fast and reliable internet to the residents of this county would be another example of government working for the people and local decision-makers, you know, doing something that truly serves the collective good. So we all know that pandemic has revealed gaps in access in rural communities and the necessity of having widespread access, you know, both for educational and professional undertakings and opportunity, and for safety. And I know that's been, you know, a topic of conversation lately. We certainly have experienced the unreliable service of CenturyLink, and have spent many days without service at different times, which is both unsafe and also pretty frustrating, given the high price tag for allowing service that doesn't get a lot of service. So, you know, we were forced, that would enable us to have, you know, access for work, et cetera, and also safety, and it's still not reliable. So we just really, you know, encourage and support using these public funds to hopefully reduce disparities and increase safety, and we believe that that really is a benefit for every person in the county, you know, young or old, regardless of income, that it truly is a public service, and so we would just like to voice our support for that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than the visitor, I think that's all the people on Zoom, right? At this point, I will close the public comment period for the evening. And we had the old business, but I think we already took care of the.
We just, a quick item, you can move them around if you want, but this would be very best.
Okay, let's do that, then.
The internet cooperates.
Yep. Supplemental appropriation following budget amendment.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the only way that I can support doing this is if it's not tied exclusively to this regional agreement.
We're not, we're not on that yet.
We're close. One item in between.
Okay.
Sorry. As I alluded to during the public hearing on the budget amendment, there were a couple things that, one came in after the fact, and that was the depressed revenue for Company Four and Five, and one that I failed to include in that public hearing, and that was the bonus that the board previously authorized, wasn't included in that amended budget, and therefore need to be added to the budget as part of a supplemental appropriation, and that's presented to you similarly to how it would normally be at the beginning of your meeting, but it had to follow the budget amendment public hearing.
Because these two, these two items in the aggregate don't break the 1% rule, we don't need to have a separate public hearing?
It's unlikely, well, it's possible that you will have another budget amendment public hearing at the end of the fiscal year if you went over 1% again, but normally that doesn't happen.
Okay, but these two, these two items were okay going forward without an additional public hearing for these two items, okay? And we did have, I will note, we had a public hearing regarding the bonus, the bonuses paid to sheriff's deputies, so the public had an opportunity to comment on that as a standalone item.
Then this appropriates the revenue and the expense.
Okay. I'll go, go ahead and put forward a motion to approve supplemental appropriations for the addition of the sheriff deputy bonuses, the revenue and expenses, and then funding for Company Four and Five to cover their depressed fundraising revenue in excess of the placeholder that was in our earlier budget amendment. Hopefully, I crafted that okay?
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Mr. Parrish? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Fraser, we're going into the allocation of the ARPA funding. We should, I-
We should, I guess...
Sorry for jumping the gun.
Convene the broadband authority.
Before you, before you get into that, the chair should convene the broadband authority.
I would like to convene the broadband authority for this discussion on December 6th. Okay, we're convened. Yes, sir, Mr. Fraser.
Again, sorry for trying to jump the gun, but I don't think that this ARPA funding should be tied exclusively to the regional agreement. I still have plenty of questions about the regional agreement that I haven't received an answer to. And I, I, when I talk to people out in the community about this regional agreement, I tell them that whether we get a substantial amount of money for, from a private donation like Mr. Akri has generously made the proposal for, once, once Rappahannock County has that money available for it to spend, it basically becomes public funds that we can use, that we're responsible for. Between the state and county monies, we're talking $13 million, and it doesn't, it doesn't improve the fire and rescue or sheriff's department radio system, it doesn't improve the 911 system. If you're out and about on the road, it will make your phones work at the house if you have electricity and the fiber's working and, you know, everything else is working. Of course, you can use the, what is it, voiceover protocol, or you can use Wi-Fi to call from your home on your cell phone, but if you're out in Harris Hollow, or you're down at Rock Mills, or you're out on 231, your cell phone is still not going to work in an emergency. And we have, we're obligating ourselves, we've already obligated ourselves to $13 million, possibly, and a two to three-year buildout, that's what he asked for in his, his body grant, that he be allowed to go out to three years, Jimmy Carr of All Points Broadband, three years buildout. And we're obligated that we cannot talk to any other service providers that may be seen as competitive to his, his initiative. That means we can't talk to anybody that provides cell phone coverage in the county. So you're going to spend $13 million, cell phones won't work any better, except at your house, and I haven't found anybody to support it with that yet. When we, when we bring all that around, and we don't really have our 2.4 million, I mean, this is a million dollars towards it, or close to it, but we still have a $1.4 million gap, if we stay in that agreement. So I think that if we're going to allocate these funds for broadband, it not be tied exclusively to the regional agreement with All Points.
How does that work?
We don't have to be, we don't have to be tied to this unless y'all have already decided this in another kind of way.
So the board has allocated, whether it be CARES Act dollars or ARPA dollars, to different uses or purposes. I suppose the boards, if board supervisors upon recommendation from the broadband authority could allocate it to broadband project, not defined by a specific project, if you wanted to. I don't know if in that allocation there would be some trigger that would have to be pulled at a later date if it were to be used for this regional agreement or some other agreement. But I think that's fully at the pleasure of the board on how you want to identify what you're allocating those ARPA dollars for. And what that means is you're basically telling yourself and the public that they're not available for some other purpose. It's an accounting exercise for you. It's likely that the dollars for any broadband project, as Mr. Fraser pointed out, won't be spent for, you know, years, not in this fiscal year very likely, and possibly not the next, you know, be spread out over the next two or three. The ARPA dollars must be spent by 2026, so...
But the thing is, if, not to interrupt, not, but I'm, you know, I'm trying to think, and I'll lose thought, my train of thought if I don't say something, but let's just say that these body grants don't materialize and Rappahannock is not included in that, or, or some other scenario similar to that, then we, if we allocate this money only to that one broadband initiative, then we're back to square one, we'd have to have a meeting all over again just to make another decision. So I think if we just simply say it's going to be used for broadband, but it's not going to be exclusively tied to that initiative, then it puts the money in play for another one, some other use, broadband use later on.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Number one, I mean, Mr. Fraser, you're always very thoughtful, and you're, you're ahead of me many times, and have been around a lot longer than me, but here we have a regional agreement, and whether, whether it's ideal for us or not, and whether we're giving up some autonomy as part of that regional agreement or not, it's supposed to remain to be seen, but the Akri family put forward substantial amount of money, $3.5 million, if I remember correctly, contingent upon our entering into the regional agreement. There's no doubt that there are outside organizations that might be willing to contribute to this project, and by project, I mean very specifically this, this universal broadband initiative by way of the regional agreement that's now before the state for review. So I think it would be very, very risky to, to, in a nonspecific way, allocate ARPA funds to some broad idea of broadband and not send the signal to potential other funding sources that we might not be committed to precisely the agreement for which we're seeking funding. And I learned today, I believe Mr. Curry sent an email this afternoon about the challenge process, that Chantel participated in recently, and Chantel, it's clear, wants out, and on a recent Wall Street earnings call, made it clear that they are exiting the wireless broadband business. So I'm not sure who else is out there. And I agree with you that in terms of cell phone connectivity, this might not be the perfect solution in the near term, but I can't look my constituents in the eye. And you've heard from one this evening and heard from many others previously, and you've heard me beat this dead horse over and over. We can't count on CenturyLink anymore, and we can't count on landline service anymore. So let's start there, and let's solve that problem, because at least when people are at home, if they're able to use voiceover IP on a reliable fiber network, at least we don't have to lose sleep at night wondering if people like the Welch's and residents along my road, whether or not they can reach 911. And I, I think we need to be very, very precise in how we are allocating funds, because if we, if we don't say that we're committed to this, it sends a very bad message to the state, and it sends a very bad message to other organizations that might be willing to fund in part this broadband solution for 2,000 households in the county. So your point is well taken, but I am not aware of anyone else out there who has some technology that we have, haven't thought about or talked about that could solve the separate issue of cell phone coverage in the county. So I don't think we should make some general allocation of money towards some general broadband initiative, and I think it should be pinned specifically to the regional agreement. Thank you.
Perhaps I didn't articulate this properly, because you seem to be on a different page than I am.
Okay.
And I don't know, again, I don't know why this board, or the authority wants to be married to this plan, that we still have some very, very needful information that's withstanding. We don't have that. So I don't even know why we would be talking about being exclusively joined to that agreement when we have this information that's, that's not, that's forthcoming. So the thing is, if you are going to make an allocation for something specific, you're saying to everybody, including the people here assembled tonight, that every taxpayer in the county, that we're going to charge ahead on, on, on this program, well, we don't have enough information to, to allocate the money for that. But if you allocate the money for broadband, then I think you send a signal that the county is going to be doing something with that amount of money, and, and you hope it may be that program, but it's going to be some program.
Well, Ms...
Why, why in the world would we continue down a path with this guy Carr when he gives conflicting information to every board of supervisors he talks to? And until we get those things hammered out, why would we be exclusively dealing with him?
I know, I, I thought Mr. Zuschlag made a good point. He served on both iterations of the broadband committee, and, and here we are, and we have a solution that seems like it could be deployed in a relatively short period of time.
Three years.
And when we, as I've mentioned previously, about a year and a half ago, when we ballparked a fiber to the home network on a universal basis in Rappahannock County, we came up with a $26 million figure. Turns out that according to All Points Broadband, it's more like $20 million, and Mr. Rachel also made the point that in the past, the discussion always was the same, where in the heck are you going to get $20 million? Well, thanks to, not thanks to, but as a result of the pandemic, and then thanks to philanthropists like the Akri family, we are now in a position, instead of having to find $20 million, we're down to $2.4 million, which last time I checked is just above 10% of what we thought it was going to cost in the first place. So I do think we have to be very specific in any allocation of funds. Those are not spent funds, by the way. And I should also mention that while there are questions that remain unanswered, I believe that we have to allow the state, the state grant system to do its work, at which point we will be in a contract phase of this overall initiative. And I do believe that until we get to the contract phase, last time I checked, we're not committing anything. And so we haven't heard from the state, we haven't heard back from All Points Broadband, we've only learned just today about the challenge process. So I think it's actually premature for us to dig into the nitty gritty of the agreement. And in the meantime, I think we have a job as public servants to send a clear message that we're committed to this, and we're sending a clear message to those individuals and organizations out there who might be willing to support this initiative for our county, and we're sending a message to the state that we're serious, and we're sending a message to the other seven localities that are part of this regional agreement, that Rappahannock County is not an outlier in this regard, and that we too recognize the importance of basic infrastructure.
My question is, why do you want the specificity and the appropriation language, but you don't want the specificity on what the liability of Rappahannock County is right now?
As mentioned...
Why, why don't you want that, Mr. Whitson?
As mentioned, we are not in a contract phase of this overall initiative yet.
Why would be, why would we be appropriating nearly $1 million of taxpayer funds when we don't know the specifics, the specific liability to the Rappahannock taxpayer?
For lack of a better way of phrasing this, I believe we're doing a set aside here, and there's no expenditure, and it's an appropriation. That's the word, it's an appropriation.
It's, it's not...
It's not even appropriation.
It's not a legal appropriation.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. It's a set aside. That's where I started.
But you don't want to set aside in a Broadway, you want to set aside specifically.
100%. You and I disagree on that point.
Without the specificity of the liability to the taxpayer.
I'm talking about the specificity of the initiative. If we, if we, if we set aside funds for some amorphous concept of better communication in our county using some technology, that sends really the wrong message to our partners at the state level, our partner in... I know, we, we absolutely disagree, but I, I have the floor right now. So let's send the right message to organizations out there that we are committed to this as a public governing, or a local governing body, and that we would welcome additional funding to support this initiative. And I'm okay disagreeing with you, and I hope you'll be okay disagreeing with me. I'm one of five, so I'm allowed to say my piece, and I've said it. Thank you.
Governor, Ms. Smith, I...
I want to just add to that, you know, I think in undertaking the regional agreement, we've already been specific about what we're undertaking, and we're precluded from engaging any other parties, you know, and so detached from that regional agreement. So I don't see what the harm of being general is. We're specific in the agreement, we can be general on some side. I, I don't see the advantage of being specific if other folks that are, are going to donate money, or we need some leverage in the approach, and it's clear that we have consensus to, to have the money, it's got to have skin in the game, basically, it sounds like is what we're being asked for. I don't think it should be name specific, and I, I think making it name specific may compromise some of our negotiations.
So if I can say something, cell service is one thing, and broadband is another thing. We've given permits to several companies to build cell towers, and they haven't done it, so that's too bad. But the, the broadband is, I think, what we're really talking about here, to benefit the schoolchildren and also the elderly, to keep track of their social security and their Medicare and all that stuff. But there's a lot of this that I do not understand, but I think in terms of going with the regional approach with All Points, we did that in order to acquire the gift of the $3.5 million. And so we can only assume that going with the regional approach is going to help us get the contract in the, in the long run. My goal, my only goal, not that I'm going to be here any longer, is that we serve the county with the broadest broadband possible at the least expense to the county residents in terms of taxes, and it seems to me like we are, we're getting there with this approach.
As Ms. Smith said, that this really is skin in the game. I don't feel like the broadband authority or the board, I know I was given the, the authority or the okay to go fundraise, it's very difficult to knock on a door or talk to Path or anybody and say, we're going to need some money from you, and they look at me and go, what are you putting in? And I'm saying, well, we think we may have some ARPA funds that we can put towards it, but we haven't had a vote on it. So the purpose of this, in my mind, is to give us skin in the game, as Ms. Smith said, and be able to say to others that, yes, we're going to need some additional funding, because we're still, there's a gap there. And if the VADI comes through at the end of the month, or the first of the year before the administration changes, and it doesn't happen, it's a total game changer. You know, we, we stop this conversation because all of a sudden we don't have the funds from the state. So you're right, in that situation, if VADI doesn't happen, this conversation is completely different.
That part of the conversation's over. If this, if the broadband authority and the board supervisors, let's just use a million dollars as simpler math, we put a million dollars with the ARPA funds in this account and say that we're going to use it for future broadband expansion in Rappahannock County. That gives you the leverage to go talk to people to not get specific funding. You can get funding for broadband outlay in Rappahannock County, but you don't tie it specifically to this grant, this body grant that may not happen. If you go in there and say, we want, whatever the number is you ask for, a quarter million, a million dollars from some, some other source, Path or, or whatever, and you tell them you wanted it for this broadband initiative, this VADI agreement thing with All Points Broadband, and they make their funds specific, then if it all falls apart, you've got to go back again, all over again, and say, look, we've got another program. Well, you could have maybe a quarter million here, a half million there, you could have money allocated from these various sources that we can still fall back on for, for Plan B, if there's a Plan B required. I'm not saying, don't spend the money on All Points, I'm saying, don't make it exclusive for All Points, and then that gives you better leverage, and as Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith pointed out, if All Points is probably listening tonight, they may be visitor, they're listening to us say, hey, even though we don't know what our liability is with you, we're going to give you all the money you asked for. This is how we're finding a way to do it.
I don't agree with that, because we haven't signed a contract yet.
No, but we just keep going down that path. We just keep going down that path without saying, we're not going any further till we get our questions answered. We're going down that path by allocating a million dollars here and a million dollars there to All Points Broadband Initiative instead of broadband initiative in Rappahannock County. And you're tying your hands when you go to somebody trying to negotiate some sort of other donations, and, and we, we sell ourselves short in front of All Points, because he knows exactly who he's dealing with here. He's dealing with people that feel like there's nothing else out there to do but to do what he wants us to do. And that's not the way to negotiate public business. It's really not.
In my view, we can't actually ask an outside organization... In my view, we can't actually ask an outside organization to put money into an initiative if they don't know the amount that initiative will require in terms of total expenditures. And we have a defined expenditure of $5.9 million, which has been whittled down by three and a half, it's 2.4. The schools are putting in three.
They know what they can give.
So 2.1. So I think if you are expecting after, I think it's an overused phrase, but if we put skin in the game, then whoever out there, and Ms. Donahue has ideas, and I'd like to talk to USDA, I mean, if, when you talk to them, you do have to speak to anyone outside the county with great specificity. And you cannot pin down any specific number outside of this path we are going down. And last time I checked, it is the only path available to us right now. So I'm not sure who else is out there.
You locked yourself into the only path going, that's what you did.
As one member of this board, I seize an opportunity, Mr. Fraser.
Three people locked themselves into this.
Okay, three of us seize an opportunity.
Three people locked themselves into the only path that they can take. That is not the way the public business is supposed to be done.
Ms. Donahue, what, for tonight's discussion, what, what specific, what specific allocation or set aside of our ARPA funds are you contemplating?
At this point, based on what was on board docs, the half of the ARPA funds, which I think Mr. Curry's got down, is $715,768. If we allocate or set aside those funds, that on top of the funds that the school has committed to, basically gets us to about a million-dollar level that the county as a whole is committed to.
Great.
And I think that allows me to have conversations with PATH. I know there's going to have to be some sort of application that they will need from us. But at least if there's the potential for PATH to go up to a million dollars, who knows? I would like to at least have them see what we are willing and committing to from the county side of it as well.
Ms. Donahue, I'm almost motioned out, but this is a pretty important one. So I'll put forward a motion that we allocate $715,768, which is precisely half of our ARPA allotment of $1,431,536 to the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission All Points Broadband Broadband Project. And if I need to add anything to that motion, Mr. Curry, let me know.
I understand.
For discussion, I will second.
I mean, sure, Donahue, you're the one that has to go out and talk to folks. Do you think that it has to be so overtly specific to All Points that it, that isn't saying, you know, "We have earmarked $750,000 for current broadband needs from our ARPA funding." And folks knowing that All Points is the only player that we're working with, I mean, I think that's a logical deduction, and I don't really understand. I wonder if you would feel comfortable being, you know, more general in nature.
To be honest, and this is the first time I'll be dealing with a foundation like PATH, I do not believe an organization that is well-respected and wants to stay that way would be willing to allocate a large sum of money without very specific information. And if this VADI regional approach does not work, we start over because we're back at the $26 million level and trying to figure out how to do it.
And my only other question is this $715,768. I know we had allocated some of that money to the RCWSA. Are we counting for that, or is that out of the budget?
No, so you're allocating from the full ARPA that you expect to receive. The next payment will come into the county in May of '22. Of course, these dollars for broadband won't be spent till FY '23, '24, '25. So it'll be well after the dollars are received. And we know we will receive the full $1,431,536, just broken into two payments. So yes, you have funded $65,000 to the sewer authority. And this would enable you to fund additional funding to the sewer authority and others as was contemplated at your previous meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So it seems to me that we'd be forced to possibly sacrifice getting accepted and also losing the $3.5 million gift. So I think we'd be, I don't think we should take that gamble.
All right. Hearing no further.
You know something that I don't, Mr. Parrish?
Mr. Akri's, if you recall, there was, back at that time, there was discussion of regional versus go it alone.
I know, and it was.
Three and a half was for the regional only, yeah.
But I don't see, I just don't understand why we just keep tripping all over ourselves to make Mr. Carr happy when he won't give us information that, that we need. Or y'all okay with not having the information? I mean, that's, maybe we need to have that discussion.
I'm assuming we'll have time to get that information.
Mr. Fraser, I assure you, I will not sign off on a contract that doesn't satisfy all my questions. And you have asked very good questions today.
I've been asking them since October 1st.
Right. And it is, we're not to a point yet where we even have a contract to review. So let's get the contract and get all your questions answered. And I'm sure I'll have questions, I always do. And, and I'm not going to sign off on anything that doesn't protect our taxpayers. Absolutely not, so.
Well, why in two months can't I get that one question answered?
What question?
Well, there's two, but that's a different, we're, it's actually two questions. I asked that question before y'all even read the VADI agreement that we, that was applied for in our name. I've had those questions since late in September. I brought them to y'all on the 1st of October, and I don't have those answers yet.
Okay.
We will, we will get those answers.
We're talking about allocating a million dollars.
We will get those answers.
We're allocating, we're not appropriating.
It's the same thing.
No, it's not the same thing, we're not.
You're appropriating, you're allocating, you're going to make it available to him regardless of the liability to the taxpayer.
We're setting it aside until we get to the contract phase, at which point we'll review the contract with legal counsel. And then we'll make a collective determination whether or not we agree that the contract is solid and that our taxpayers are protected.
While we're there, the last time we had questions with the legal counsel, she pretty much said that this is the only thing you got going, you got to sign for it.
I call for the question. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the allocation, or setting the $715,768 aside, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
For all the reasons stated, repeatedly stated.
And I know we just want to, I mean, I know we're trying to work through this. It's very challenging to follow remotely. And I do appreciate you all letting me come in remotely today. But I do have reservations about voting in the primaries. But from the fundraising perspective, if that's what's needed, I guess that's what we need to do.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, so I need to make a motion to, or have a motion to close the broadband authority?
Yeah, you just, you're going to adjourn the broadband authority.
Adjourn the broadband authority.
You should take a motion.
Yep.
I'll put forward a motion that we adjourn the meeting of the broadband authority.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion that we adjourn the meeting of the board of supervisors.
Second.
Wow.
Mr. Parrish. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Most important statement in your career.
That's right. Yeah, Tommy, take care.
Thanks.